I am delighted to flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Thank you, Dave. Has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? Are there any additions or changes? Do you entertain a motion then to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for April 13th.
I'll second.
Move it in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hey. Hopefully, everybody on the Internet can see us. Everybody's staying healthy. At this time, we'll move right into claims, the board order claims. Casey, you want to come on up? Everybody good with the bills?
I did see them. I do need to speak with the Fair Board. Governor Little during the meeting on Thursday didn't give a strong recommendation that the fair and rodeo should occur this year. And I saw the $500 request for some new software. I don't know if that's going to help them be able to do an auction online because I know that they were researching that. But I think we go ahead and approve it for now and it will be software that we can use into the future. But I think we are going to have to make some decisions on planning for the fair and rodeo issue before there's a lot of expenditure.
I did send that question to David and he did approve that software purchase. We're all good. And I think we'll just have to see where we are in August when the fair comes around. I know there's a lot of spring rodeos, what they call calf ropings that are done. And I think those are some of the things maybe the governor was trying to discourage was that kind of stuff right now. But who knows? I think it ends the 15th, which is Wednesday. We'll see what he does then. I'm assuming he'll get back on and let us know to go further or, you know, make a change. Until that time, we have to kind of keep going the way we are. Is there any other questions on bills or claims?
I didn't see anything.
I didn't either. So I entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the claims, board order claims. Is there a junior college? We shouldn't have.
Second half. Move it in second. All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. If I may be so bold, who do we have on the phone?
This is Gabe. I'm on this morning.
Morning, Gabe.
David.
This is Pat. I'm on this morning.
Okay.
David, on the phone?
Who?
David.
Gabe, David, and Pat. And Mackenzie, are you on?
She has been having VIO meetings and jumping on after that, so.
Okay. Anybody else on the phone? All right. Thanks, guys, for calling in. At this time, we'll go right into the elected official reports and first one up is June. Good morning.
Good morning, James.
Good morning. I have allergies.
This is Melissa. I'm sorry. I had my microphone on mute, but Melissa's on the phone as well.
Okay. Thanks, Melissa.
So, so an update. We are diligently trying to get all of our subdivisions done. Lori's down to one. We'll finish that this week. We'll have all the splits, combinations, subdivisions done. DeeDee and Gabe discussed the urban renewal. We're waiting on the state to get us their report. DeeDee's done everything she can on that. We've got the tax code areas entered, but we're waiting on the state on that. The appraisers are, they have finished up all of the analysis and they have finished up all of the appraisal that we did last year. I just got an email from Jennifer. We have a lot of checking to do on this. So we're going to be busy for the next couple of weeks checking our values and analysis. The DMV, I've got McCall opening up five days a week now. We're getting a little overwhelmed down here. We're going to try it out from 10 to 3, but the ladies are actually there from about 8 to 4 every day. But we may have to extend those hours for phone calls or whatever. But the Internet is really picking up. The mail is picking up a lot. And we do all the mail and the Internet at this DMV down here in Cascade. So what we're doing is we're sending the overflow phone calls up to McCall. And we can't forward them, but they write them down, get a phone number, message, and name, and then scan it and email it to McCall. So we're trying to stay caught up.
Why can't we forward them?
The phone. I don't believe we can forward that phone. It's a different phone up there.
Has David checked it?
I believe he has, but I can double check with him on that. It'd be nice if we could, but I don't think it's in our system or something.
I don't, I don't feel like that's really great customer service to, you know.
We're doing, yeah. If we can, we will, but I believe he and I have discussed that and there's something about that phone.
June, can you transfer the Internet stuff to McCall?
No, that, no, we did look into that and that's something that is through ITD. And Kathy looked at that and it would take, she said, a act of Congress to get that done. And it would probably take a long time to get it set up. So, so we're trying to just put as many phone calls and we've changed our messages to let the public know when they call, either here or up there, that that one is available in McCall.
Everything else as far as the assessment is all on schedule and going to be ready?
We've prioritized. We've got the necessary things on schedule and those necessary things will be done. There are things that we've put on the back burner that aren't going to get done. We'll have to catch up on those later. It's, but we have the top priority things. Those will be done, what we are required to have done.
An assessment's come out when? The 15th of June?
They come out the first Monday in June.
So what will happen? The governor has talked about freezing the property taxes at the 2019.
Taxes or values?
Values. So how would that, or maybe taxes? I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
I guess I heard in my mind, values. That would be something to research, how that would impact us?
Oh, it would, basically, our values would be the exact same that they were last year if he does that. So that's more of a budget question for the clerk. I mean, if we have the same value that we had last year.
Well, it would make things easier right now, but I'm concerned about what happens the following year when all of a sudden.
When we have to catch up?
20% to catch up.
Yeah, because our market is still not slowing down. I mean, it's slowed down to where we don't have the frenzy that we had earlier. But it has definitely slowed down because of the coronavirus. But people are still buying and it's when everything starts opening up again, we still don't have a lot of inventory available out there. And so it's supply and demand.
I wondered if you'd heard anything more.
I have not heard anything about that. It would sure make it a lot easier this June, but I don't look forward to the following year. And I do not know how it would affect our budgets.
I wonder if there's some way that you could influence, maybe the assessors could, hey, take last year's values and times 3% or 5% or some average statewide and just go that way.
And that would be really nice, but you've also got those counties that didn't have any, they don't have the market that we have. For us, it would be really nice because we have a very busy and a very accelerating market. But there's other counties that don't and that might not go over very well with them. So it's, you get 44 counties in a room, you're going to get 44 opinions.
Yep, that's for sure.
So.
All right. Anything else for June? All right. Thank you. Have a safe day. Doug. Morning, Doug.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Our office is beginning to process the absentee ballot requests. And we are making sure that we are going to hit all of the necessary deadlines just for the Commissioner's information, what the deadlines are for individuals requesting an absentee ballot is May 19th. That is the actual day set for the primary. But registered voters have the ability to request an absentee ballot up until May 19th. Those ballots then need to be returned to us by June 2nd. So the official, the official day of the May primary is the 19th, but we will not be getting, counting individuals' votes until June 2nd. June 2nd is when we are required to have those results out to the general public. So that is significantly different than what has happened in the past. So our office is processing all of those applications right now and getting ready to have the results available by June 2nd. Any questions?
Yeah, Doug, just since we're online, could you maybe do a quick run through of how people request those ballots?
Absolutely.
Send to them so they can understand?
There's a few options. The first option is you can go to idahovotes.gov and register online for your absentee ballot applications. Or you can go to the Valley County official website to the election information page. And there's the second bullet point. It will say to request your absentee ballot. And then on the second bullet, you have the ability to download the application from the Valley County website, print that application off, fill it out, sign it, and then mail it back to Valley County Elections at PO Box 1350, Cascade, Idaho, 83611. If you have any questions, you can also contact our office at 208-382-7100.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate that.
Doug, how is the state getting out the word on that?
So they are sending out a mailer. They also are doing several public relations, public service announcements. There'll be a public service announcement going out tomorrow. We've also been informed that any registered voter that does not apply for an absentee ballot application by April 20th, they will automatically be mailed an application. That is my understanding and that was the confirmation that I received from the Idaho Secretary of State's Office on Thursday. So if you, for those individuals that have not requested an application, the state of Idaho, their Secretary of State's Office has the ability to run a report to see who's requested an absentee ballot application and who is not. If they have not, the state will be mailing them an application to fill out.
So would your recommendation be for Mackenzie to get the word out on the county website and our Facebook page? Does she just replicate the PSA that's coming out?
She has been. We've been communicating directly with Mackenzie and she has been replicating the message that has been going out countywide to the 44 counties from the Secretary of State's Office. The Secretary of State has also hired a public relations individual to make sure that we're getting the word out. And this is definitely priority in our office at this point in time.
Doug, do you have plenty of help to do this or are you going to bring some more folks in?
We have, we've, we have our office down in the clerk's office. And we've also brought in people from the court, employees from the court are assisting us. So we've paired one, one of the, one of the employees in the clerk's office with an employee of the court staff. And we are making sure that we are adequately staffing our department to process the absentee applications. So at this point in time, we do not need to bring any additional staff. We are able to, yeah, we're able to do the work that's necessary.
Are you getting quite a few requests?
We have, not as many as I want, but we've received approximately 500 out of the registered voters. That's not a lot out of the approximately 5,800 registered voters to only have 500 absentee ballot applications right now. We would like to see that number increase, so.
Okay.
Okay, that's elections.
Thanks, Doug.
The other thing that we're working on is budget. Elected officials and department heads should be receiving their budget request forms to be mailed out, to be emailed out later this week. So we will begin preparing for fiscal year 2021 budget. At this point in time, the budget worksheets will be reviewed by the elected officials and department heads. And then I will be reaching out to the elected officials and department heads just to begin the initial presentations or the initial request to be reviewed. And then we will, we will be scheduling budget workshops with the Commissioners in the near future. More than likely, the first one of those will be in the first week of May is when our first official budget workshop will take place with the Commissioners.
Doug, have you heard anything more about the 5% holdback?
No, the only thing that we're hearing is that the state of Idaho is potentially doing a 5% holdback. I have included that in my letter to the elected officials and department heads to let them know that the revenue that we receive from the state might be held back up to 5%, which could potentially impact how we prepare our fiscal year 2021 budget. With the reduction amount of revenue that we are receiving, I strongly would recommend that the elected officials and department heads take a close look at their request to the Commissioners. And it's possible, I don't know, but the Commissioners might be required to do some sort of holdback just to make sure that we are not putting that additional burden on the taxpayers.
I don't know if you guys saw some of the news apps this morning talked about the federal government and income taxes coming in at a record pace. So people are paying their income taxes, which is, that's really good news, so. Hopefully, it'll trickle down on us.
Any questions regarding the budget preparations for budget fiscal year 2021?
I reached out to Doug and asked him to put in that budgeting process, I don't know if you share it with these guys, but just how the budgets are going to, to support the STAR initiative that we've started with? And, you know, any requests for increases? How does it, how does it look toward our service transparent, accountable, and responsive conversation this year?
And I have included a paragraph with the letter that I'm sending out to the elected officials and department heads just acknowledging the requests that the Commissioners have made about how their budgeting would reflect the current mission statement of Valley County. So that has been included in that letter just to share with you.
Thank you.
Buildings and grounds, we will be having a report from CHM at 11:30 regarding the north end of the building. We also will be having an engineer should be here today to inspect the earthquake damage that occurred from the earthquake. The structural engineer will be here to assess the crack that has developed after the earthquake. I did put a claim in with ICRAIM. ICRAIM is indicating that the deductible will be $25,000 if repairs do need to take place. So that we are, we did submit a claim regarding the damage from the earthquake. The structural engineer will be here to assess that. We'll be able to report his response in the next couple of weeks. And again, CHM will be presenting regarding what mitigation work they have done on the north end of the building. We also had, we have a bit of a hiccup when we were removing the carpet. We have discovered that the tiles that are underneath the carpet are, have asbestos in them. So we more than likely are going to have to have someone do some mitigation work regarding the asbestos tile. So that is also a new development that occurred on Friday. So we will be working through that as well.
Do we know if there's asbestos in the ceiling tiles or not?
The asbestos in the ceiling tiles have already been mitigated a few years ago. So this is new that the asbestos, that there was asbestos used in the tiles that are underneath the carpet.
Yeah, a gentleman that was here happened to be in the hallway and that introduced me. And I was asking, I said, you know, what do you think about that? And he goes, you got a lot more issues with the north end than our crack in the foundations.
And that individual was the insurance adjuster.
Insurance adjuster, okay. It's going great. Thank you for that.
We got to do what we got to do.
The other buildings and grounds matters. We're just making sure that we're doing our routine checks. We haven't had a significant amount of tickets come in for building related items. So at this point in time, we're just doing routine checks, trying to keep in contact with CHM on the north end of the building. And again, they will be presenting at 11:30.
Doug, have we been billed yet by CHM?
We have not.
So we don't know what that cost is?
Not at this point in time.
Any more questions for the clerk?
One lastly, we do have court today. We have district court. There'll be three sentencings that the court will be handling. And that's a report on the court.
Okay.
That's it for the clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sheriff. Good morning.
Good morning. Don't really have a lot to report. Of course, we'll be involved in the district court process and we have one arraignment today. Not getting a whole lot of calls about the state in place. A lot of it's more just, you know, if you happen to see somebody on, you know, when you're out doing your normal business around town. I think that probably.
We lean in. We are getting, everybody says they can hear us really well now, but they're not hearing people.
Okay, but I think that probably if you guys are getting calls, that you would refer them to dispatch. You will keep hands on those and just see what positions are.
So what you're saying is stay in place. The only thing that, that we have is short term rounds. Okay, so the governor just has to stay in place.
Until Wednesday.
Until Wednesday.
And then that will be assessed or, we don't know yet. Okay. Other than that, we've already talked about that the budget would be, you know, documents would be coming out. So our supervisors know that and we've told them to start looking at their budget. And actually, we really don't have a whole lot of requests that I know of. It's just, you know, kind of continued from past years and we will look at those areas and see if there's any way we can cut back on those and be diligent in that area.
Did you get the email from Waterways on the pickup?
I didn't.
Doug.
Sheriff, it just came in this morning.
Okay, so I have not seen that. I did check my emails before I came to work.
But I can assure the Commissioners and the Sheriff that Captain and I were working on that. Waterways was very aware. They wanted to know the value of the vehicle that Sergeant Turner is driving. So we are fully aware of this and we'll be able to provide them with the value.
So you got on top of that one.
Okay.
Fully aware of it.
Okay, all right.
Just want to make sure somebody can do.
All right, thank you.
Hey, anything else? All right. Be safe. Uh, Gabe?
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Clerk Miller. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you, Gabe. Good morning.
Hey, perfect. I just wanted to report on my, my office hours. We're still, we're still open 8 to noon and then 1 to 5. We're closed during that lunch, that lunch hour. Our, primarily the same as it has been with Ashley being here in the mornings or being there in the mornings and then I'll come in for the afternoon. However, I am starting to bring Jody back in a little bit. She worked one half day last week and we'll do another half day, maybe two half days this week. I just want to, want to keep her engaged and, and, you know, up to speed on everything that's going on. She's got a couple of indigent cases to prepare for, for the, for the cat board. As far as indigent cases, we've not had any new ones in the last several weeks. I'm not sure if that's because of the slowdown or Medicaid expansion kicking in, but that's encouraging to see. Like to report, our potential tax deed properties are down to about 45, you know?
Oh, that's good news.
Yeah, that is very good. Title searches are being completed this week. We've received about one third of those already. And we're scheduled to receive the rest of them by Wednesday or Thursday of this week. We're still on target to send out notices of pending issue of tax deed by April 30th. Here's a, here's a bit of encouragement. Property taxes collected January through March totaled about $1.3 million, which is fairly typical for this time of year. So that, that has not slowed down. Now, I'm not sure if you're aware, but SRS funds were received last Friday in the amount of about $1.5 million.
Well, we will be distributing those to the schools and to Title III. And I haven't done those calculations yet. I'll be working on those calculations today. And we will be getting the SRS distribution out to the schools, to Title III and to the county.
Perfect.
Good. I have a few action items I'd like to discuss with you this morning. Got two, two cancellations and hopefully you receive those by email.
Yep.
Have you had a chance to look at those?
Yep.
Hey, perfect. The first one is, it's a total of $450.98. And it's for parcel number MH0008300015A. This, this is a case where we, we took, we, the county took, took lead to the real estate, the real property last year and sold that at auction. This, this parcel is the mobile home that sits on that real property, the personal property. It went through the warrants of the strain process and was sold by the sheriff for $1. This, this amount of $450.98 is what, is what's remaining on that, on that, that mobile home parcel.
You know, Gabe, is the mobile home still on the lot though or is it gone?
I'm not sure if it's gone yet. I, I'm guessing it's still there, but I'm not sure. It's, it's, it's in, in, in no shape to be used. It's caved in. And I think an argument could be made that it should not have had much, you know, much value on it the last few years.
I think that property's already resold, so.
All right. So do you want to do this one and then the next one or do you want us to vote now or do you want to do all at once?
I hope we can do, we can do both of them at once. The second one is cancellation number 20-8. Sorry, that first one was actually 20-9. I guess I'm going to reverse order. This, this 20-8 is for parcel number LR15N03E100006. And the total amount is $121.90. This, this is a, it's actually a small shed that, the explanation here says family members of Mrs. Wesley had told we, or she had been dead for 20 years and they sold the shed with the 291 acre ranch about 10 years ago. This, this was the least, a least piece of ground. And this, this shed has essentially no value, a very, very little value. It's, it's a minimal amount that I'm not, I'm not able to collect. So hoping we can get a cancellation for that.
Hey, so does everybody understand this? Do you entertain a motion then?
I move that we accept the cancellation 20-8 LR15N03E100006. And also cancellation 20-9 MH0008300015A.
Second half.
Move it in second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Any more discussion?
Can you guys meet? Can you guys meet your phones? We're getting an echo here in the phone. Okay, the next item is the quarterly report.
Yes, I did want to mention quickly that I believe Clerk Miller has the, the actual hard copies for those cancellations. If you've not seen them already, Commissioner Hasbrook, those will need to be signed this morning, please.
They're right here and I'm doing it now.
Thank you. Yeah, the next action item is the Treasurers and Clerks Joint Quarterly Report. Hopefully, you receive that by email also. It's, it's the standard quarter, quarterly that we do. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Gabe, are we about right on schedule? Have you looked at? I haven't had a chance to look yet.
On schedule in terms of what?
Percentage of the budget?
I defer to the clerk on that. I believe we are.
Doug, have you seen this?
Yeah, absolutely. It's, we are right on schedule for our expenditures. We don't have any significant over expenditures at this point in time and what this report is basically showing is that the Treasurers' Office and the Clerk's Office is balancing.
So I would entertain a motion then to approve the, I guess it'll be first quarter of 2020 report from the Treasurer.
I'll make a motion that we approve the first quarter report from the Treasurer.
Second.
Moving to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, anything else, Gabe?
That's all from the Treasurer's Office.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. Stay healthy.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. Oh, you want to do solid waste?
I'll talk to solid waste for a couple of minutes.
Okay.
I want to report that I attended a virtual meeting last week for the Bring It, Don't Burn It program that Stephanie Nelson organized. There are no substantial changes from last year's program. Free and reduced woody debris, as you know, is still set for May eleventh through October twentieth. That's free for residential and a reduced rate of twenty-five dollars per ton for commercial. There was a fair amount of discussion about the fact that this is a good activity, a good social distance activity for people to get out, clean things up, reduce fuel and it's set up so that, you know, so that there does not have to be any close contact at any point through the process. So I encourage us to keep this in place as long as we can. Secondly, Lake Shore has ordered bear-proof containers for the Warm Lake Transfer Site. As you know, the Forest Service requested that. Not sure on the EPA for those, but it'll be a few weeks, I believe, if those have been ordered. Commissioner Bingham and I plan to attend the April twenty-third McCall City Council Meeting at the request of the McCall City Manager to have a discussion regarding the Valley County Recycling Program. So he and I are actually going to meet later this afternoon to formulate some thoughts and get some materials together for that. And as directed by commissioners, I'm continuing with the conditional use permit application process for the recycle center in Lakeport. I anticipate that being placed on the agenda in the June P and Z meeting. And that's all I have for solid waste unless you have questions.
Is June, as soon as we can get that in front of P and Z?
Yes, okay.
Okay, any questions on solid waste? All right, thanks, Gabe. We'll move on down our agenda and Annette has sent in a report. We can, I think you have that, Doug, don't you?
Yes, sir.
So we can add that to the minutes. Skip is not here.
Yep, he's on the phone.
Oh, is he?
I'm here.
Hey, Skip, good morning.
Hey, good morning. So I don't really have any updates other than, you know, I sent you guys the plan that we are going to do for March probation, our office coverage, four meetings once a week via phone, talk about things and make sure we continue to improve. I've had multiple discussions with the judge and I've been able to talk to Siri a couple times and I think for the circumstances, we're doing pretty well. I did reorder some more antel repleaser units. It doesn't cost anything as long as they're on the shelf and those are one of those units that unless I approve, they pay directly to the purifier. So in a nutshell, it seems like it's going okay.
Good, good. As long as you're keeping up. I think that's the main goal.
It's pretty easy to keep up right now, but I, you know, we're just going to keep looking at what we can do to improve on our process while going through this and keeping a line on the timeline for when it's going to stop and do our best.
Okay.
Skip, are you still engaging with the V Corp group?
You know, I haven't for the last two weeks, but I'm going to get back on that tomorrow.
They've got some things going on that I think could be beneficial. So you may want to touch base with them.
Yes, but I'm getting all the emails and the information. So I've been keeping up on that.
All right, thanks, Skip.
Thank you.
Be safe. Okay, Melissa, Melissa, are you still on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so I have a laundry list of items. We've been very busy over in the extension office and so I will just kind of see those items and if you have a question about them, feel free to just stop me. I'll also type this up and send it to you via email. So for four H youth development, Allison's contacted all the four H families by phone. She's continued to encourage families to move forward with getting animals for their animal livestock projects. With that being said, the Salesforce software that they use for live auctions does have an online auction format and there's been no final decisions, but that has been recognized and there has been conversation around that. So we are just waiting, you know, to hear how to move forward. There's been a family word problem that gets released weekly from Rich Stall, which is the four H STEM program and it's online family mathematics and it links to a webpage and so the word problem gets released at the beginning of the week, the answer, then there's a Zoom online discussion. And for the first week, they had four families participate. There's been Facebook Live video releases with Megan doing backyard exploration and natural resource lessons. Right now, she's focusing and the next few series is going to be focused on birds and she's created a blog to link additional resources from the Facebook Lives too. And then those two pages are linked to the news and events section of the University of Idaho Valley County webpage. A photo contest was conducted, released and awarded via Facebook. And then we've been sharing statewide virtual classes and programs. There's, it's basically all the extension offices across the whole state have transitioned to virtual learning. And so there's just a flood of free online gardening, animal production, financial fitness, food preservation, even yoga youth classes that are online. And the best way to learn about those is probably to go to the University of Idaho Extension main webpage and search the calendar feature. There's also an e-extension which is specifically for online classes and education. And so that is also a plethora of resources for online learning. The Facebook Live videos have had four hundred to six hundred views. The 3D printers in the office have been fired up and Allison had printed some straps that could attach to masks. Those are the back straps that are supposed to make the masks more comfortable. It takes about thirty minutes for each piece and so I don't know if there's a demand for those, but there was essentially a file that was circulating and she tried it out and was printing, you know, a few of those out of the office just to experiment with that capability. Face mask design was released out of the apparel textiles and design program at the university. Students looked at it and kind of decided, you know, what's the best design to make these as comfortable as possible with the resources that are available? And so that was released last week and I shared that with the sewing mask task force on Facebook. And so it's out there if people want to use it and if they want to experiment with that potential design. There's also open source 3D printing materials released from the engineering department at the university and those are posted on the webpage. And I think, I don't think we've shared those out at Facebook yet, but we can and will. And then I have reached out to all the chambers and the McCall Chamber responded immediately. And so I've worked in partnership to launch a video series highlighting different businesses in the area. And so the video series is two to three minutes of them being entertaining and educational. So that's, you know, the engagement part of the video series. The second one is talking about, you know, their business and some, like, why did they choose what they do and where they're located. And then the third one is the big question of how can we, as community members right now, support you right now with current conditions? And so we released and launched our first video highlighting a boutique in McCall last Thursday through a virtual happy hour with the McCall Chamber members and there was fifteen people that participated. And I think that went really well. I had to upgrade my internet capacity at home because I couldn't upload the file. It was maddening. And so now I'm in like the gamer's feed, Tom Caster's.
What's coming to your house?
I'm in like the second, I'm in, yeah, coming to my house. So I'm in a better internet. So anyway, I can upload a video now and that feels really good. Okay. Master gardener class transitioned to a virtual online Zoom format. All the participants that had signed up for that class continued and participated in that format and I received some feedback where, you know, I think that worked really well for some people. Probably about half the class, some of the comments were like, oh, that was better than expected. And then I haven't heard back from the other part of the classes. So I think, you know, while everybody attended, there was only one person that called in by phone. Everybody else was there by video and I think, I think it went great. So that was really wonderful day to be able to see that happen and continue to be able to offer that. And so master gardeners went virtual. The cultivating success livestock training went virtual. I think the master gardener class was a little more engaging. The livestock class was awesome, really good content, but it was kind of, it was just a long day. There was a lot of presenters. I'm working on developing a food security story map in ArcGIS and I'll be releasing that on the Western Mountain Food Coalition webpage and that would map out different food resources, including community gardens, pantries, local growers, any other, you know, there's probably about ten different things that I've listed out on that story map. Using, and then I think that's what I have for programming and then I'm going to report out kind of more on office stuff. We've been using Trello to aggregate work products and focusing on work products for the week for each staff person in the office. We use a Zoom meeting on Mondays to be able to report out what our tasks are and what we're going to be focusing on for the week and we report out on Friday if we've accomplished those tasks and we're, I've been working on some grant applications and the paperwork needed with the university system. One is an Afri grant and it's a continuation of the community review process and it's pending. So that one's just going to be applied for and I would just be a collaborator on that grant. Another one was received and that's the Payette County area and that was the four H Robert, Robert, help the Robert Woods Well Communitys Grant and I'm just going to be doing like a five percent facilitation for that grant. And then Idaho Smart Growth reached out and they have an AARP livable communities grant with partnering with the city of McCall as well and they wanted to do something focused on local food celebration in downtown McCall. And that would be a pending grant that would go into process that would be applied for. And then it's received, that event would take place in the fall. University of Idaho Extension Conference would be this week and that's transitioned to online. And so we'll be doing a conference online. And with that being said, I will be hosting a virtual writing retreat with the Idaho Association of Natural Resources and community development extension professionals around the state. And I'll also be organizing an online sender using options or extensional professional organizations and I'll be doing that this week. And then I completed some online pesticide recertification training to reapply for my console license. So that's a laundry list of stuff and I'll send it some, you know, by email. You have any questions?
Melissa, are you having any issues with kids, especially the kids not having access to computers to do online? Does everybody have that ability or has that been an issue?
A lot of the four H programs are online programs now and so part of the function of our office for years has been, you know, making sure people know how to be connected to four H and how to use those programming online. So I feel like we, with the four H families and communities, it's like they've been acclimated to being able to get online and even if they don't do it through their computer, all the apps are internet based and so they can do it through their phone. And so the record bookkeeping through Z-Sweeps is actually all, like, like last year, they basically just stopped all the paper record bookkeeping and they said, okay, we're going to use Z-Sweeps and all your record bookkeeping for your animal market projects and your four H projects are going to be through, whether it be your phone or your computer, it's going to be through Z-Sweeps. So I don't know if they are accessing it through their phone or through their computer internet connection at home, but I feel like it's been an easier transition because we've been working with the families for a while to make that leap. I know personally, just in my neighborhood, there are access issues. I've been trying to get a family in my neighborhood connected to the internet so their kids can do schoolwork and trying to figure out how to like bring the camper in from my house and connect to my internet. So I know that there are access issues in the schools. They're bringing packets of printed stuff to their house, but, yeah, I think if the county had some support for families that were experiencing a need and then knowing like which, like in each community where people could access and get internet, I think that would be a tremendous value.
Well, I guess my feeling is that we need to kind of document that if you kind of go through the summer to see what the issues are. I'm not really sure that FEMA's going to be paying for, to buy computers for kids. I think that's more of a school function. I know the schools provide a lot of that stuff, but just for my own interest, just to know, because I ran into a lot of older folks that, oh, we don't even own a computer. We're still, a lot of people at that stage and they're getting this information from online. They're getting it from their neighbors or their grandkids when they come up with their computer. But just keep that in mind as you go through and keep us informed on that, please.
Yeah, and I did reach out to the paper and shared resources with the paper because I do recognize that, you know, there's an audience that isn't online, but that audience, you're correct, they're very hard to reach right now.
Yeah, yeah.
The Economic Development Council is also working the internet side of things and Mary Rosen is actually working also on that side of things. There is some funding out there for potentially bringing some pop sites to the different communities. So there is funding as part of the grants, I guess you'd call them. So Mary's working on that, so CDC.
Yeah, I think the issue is broadband though, isn't it, more than anything?
Yes and no. And, you know, if we can find a way to increase the ELC's capacity, as David's been working on with the new fiber, that increases our ability to do other things in the communities also. Well, there's a lot of things happening right now in that arena. A lot of people are working on that.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yeah, thank you.
So everyone just stay safe.
Me too.
All righty, I'm going to move on down. The next one up is Pat.
Excuse me, good morning.
Good morning.
Boy, the allergies, the trees are coming out and it's affecting me. So for me, I've just been trying to maintain and stay on top of what's going on from the standpoint of the COVID nineteen. Just that I can keep everybody in the loop, as it were. One other thing for you all to think about and maybe get on the agenda next week if it's not too full is talking about how we're going to start transitioning back in to somewhat of a normal workplace and then what that's going to look like. I think you all have talked about it, thought about it. I think we need to formalize that a little bit. So something that's been on my mind, it'll be interesting to see what the government does as far as federally and state and what they're going to do. And then I did have a question. It's been asked of me a couple of times. I know as far as the RV parks and the short-term housing type stuff, that there is an ordinance that says we're holding that off until May fifteenth. Does that mean from the employee standpoint that we're sheltering and placing? the employee standpoint that we're sheltering and placing self May 15th as well? Um, or is that a wait and see what the rest of the state and the federal government does? So I need to have some clarification on that if you thought about it.
Well, Pat, this is all, I think if the governor doesn't come out Wednesday and extend the order, I'm assuming that we'll all be coming back to work here pretty quick. It really depends on what he does. Um, we can't.
Okay.
We can't defy what the governor's asked us to do until the 15th. I know the resolution last week was kind of uh, uh, maybe it was my fault because we didn't commute it well enough, but that was for short-term uh Airbnbs, uh campgrounds, all that kind of stuff. It wasn't necessarily for everybody else and we didn't clarify that very well, which is probably my fault, but we're going to discuss it later on today in the agenda and hopefully we can kind of nail down what we wanted to do with that. And of course, it's if if the governor ends it Wednesday, ours would probably end at the same time, I'm assuming.
Okay, so if it if he ends it on Wednesday and and I understand that we didn't get this on the agenda, so it'll have to kind of wait. But if he ends it on Wednesday, how are you going to, how are we going to protect the employees? Are we going to require people to wear masks um to come into the office? Are is the cleaning, are the clean people still going to continue cleaning every night? Um, those are my concerns from an employee's standpoint. I suspect that the governor will extend it, but I don't know at this point. Um, so I think those are my concerns from the employee's standpoint is just keeping them safe. Um, you know, maybe maybe the modified return to work would be that we split our teams in half so that um a ton of the departments that have people coming in are doing that anyway. But, you know, half of the team works for half of the week and the other half of the team works half the last half of the week, so we don't have so many people in the courthouse at once. Um, so those are just thoughts. Uh, like I said, we didn't get on the agenda, so we can't make a decision. Uh, but those are those, that has been on my mind.
It's been on my mind as well, too, Pat, how we can open this back up without exposing everybody again.
Right, right. Because we're doing well. We only have two confirmed cases still in Valley County. So you all reacting as soon as you did uh was great because you you acted faster than Ada County faster than uh most other counties did. So what you did was great. Um, and I think is that you all have a good foresight as to um, you know, what we need to do as far as the county to keep us safe. So I appreciate that. So we're just, I think we're just going to have to be careful and maybe what we just do is is, you know, I don't know. I don't know what we do. I don't know whether it would be if the governor um says we're ending it on April 15th that you call for a special meeting so we can fix, you know, we can um create a plan. I I just don't know how that's going to work. So.
Well, I think we.
Something to think about.
I think we need to wait, you know, get the cart in front of the horse here and let's wait and see what the governor does first. Um, as far as an emergency meeting, that can always be done. Probably the soonest we could do it would be on Friday if he does lift it on Wednesday because we got to notify, notice it 24 hours.
Yeah.
And then I would look forward to your ideas and what and other people's do what they recommend. We're all, we're all going to have to work on this together for a good solid plan.
And federally.
Well, I I will work on what that looks like and send it out to the elected officials and directors just to get their feedback so that um, you know, we can have it on the agenda for next Monday, which would be if we can't get together until Friday, it's, you know, kind of may as well wait till Monday. Uh, but I will get that, I'll work on my recommendations on what we should do from um the building standpoint and then run it by the elected officials and directors. And so that should be in your packet for next week, hopefully.
Okay, and then Doug will get it on the agenda?
Yeah.
And one of the things I've been talking to with Doug and Gabe and some of the others is possibly putting up some more of the like a plastic screening in front of the public counters when we do let the public come in. We've already got that system in place so that our employees aren't getting coughed on and breathed on and hopefully somebody's kind of looking into that.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Um, and I think we're still going to have to wear masks. I don't know what is going to happen. Um, you know, they're talking about the the president is talking about um making sure that the states have good testing places or in place. So I I don't know whether it's going to look like where they expect people that have antibodies or the ones that can come back to work. Well, that's going to hurt us big time.
Yep.
Um, so I don't, I don't know what they're going to do, but I think um at the very minimum, we need to make sure that we have the plastic glass in place, that all the employees have masks to wear and and the mask from the um, the webinar I listened to last week, the masks are there not so much to protect us, but to protect those around us, which seems kind of silly, but uh really it's it's we are a carrier, not spreading that to other people. And so that's what it's talking about. But um, I'll put testing in place based on what I've learned, based on what is going, um, you know, what other people have talked about, what uh CDC recommends, and then um we'll just go from there. So.
So Pat, hold on one second. So Doug, we discussed the plastic shields. Do you know if the grounds people are researching those at all or?
We have a company that we can purchase those from, um, but there was some confusion of what departments wanted because first I heard that there were departments that wanted plexiglasses to cover their entire windows. That's going to be a significant expense. I think what we should look at is just getting those, uh, I can't remember what they're called, but they're just little shields.
Yeah.
The temporary shields that we're seeing be being erected at some of the local gas stations, the grocery store. I think that's what the county should look at purchasing instead of the full plexiglass windows. That's going to be a significant expense.
Well, I know you can buy four by eight sheets of plastic at a lot of the hardware stores and it might be a situation where the buildings and grounds may have to build a a cross thing that that'll hold them up, but I don't think it's going to be overly expensive either way.
We've got to be able to talk, talk through them too. How do you communicate with the public if it's a solid sheet?
Well, it's kind of like the court window versus do you have just a thin piece of plastic that's kind of flexible and depends on how mu- how what kind of assist we want to do, you know? I don't think we need anything that's bulletproof. I don't think we've reached that point yet, but and we probably couldn't afford those anyway. But um, there is the building department, the treasurer's office, there's of course DMV, there's the clerk's office, there's the uh clerks over in the sheriff's department. There's more than you think. Um, so.
Well, if we only have a couple of weeks to accomplish this, I think it's something that we need to take, you know, action on and get it moving. So whether, you know, Doug means the approval from us or if if we can just move forward, at least with something temporarily and see if that works. And then if we have to do something that's a little bit more, you know, going forward, then we could do that. But I think we need to get something moving and in action so that this can be, so that doesn't hold us up from reopening should, you know, that opportunity occur. So I don't know what you guys are thinking, but I think we at least need to move forward with something that is temporary in nature to allow people to get reopened if that possibility happens.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, there's plenty of varieties that you can see whether you go to the store or.
Okay.
So what I really like is down at the bank and if you get a chance, look in the window and it's a sheet about three by three and it's kind of like a slot where you it holds itself up and then there's a hole where you slide your check through your deposit or whatever and it's, you can take it away, you can take it down and clean and put it back up. And to me, that seems pretty easy and cheap and reasonable.
And that sounds like those are fairly temporary also. Okay. Doug, what, can we research what that would be um and get those ordered?
Yes. I'd say a lot of the ones that I've seen that have where you need to make a transaction or touch the cash machine or the uh card reader, something like that, is they're mounted about 12 inches higher than the counters so that the person in in the area around the cashier's covered, but you can still reach underneath it.
Okay.
So that's just a height in the bracket and I think that'd be pretty reasonable for DMV and everybody else, yeah.
I know all you got to do is Google them online and you're going to get all kinds because there there's a lot of companies selling them and face or face masks too. They're all over online now, so.
Okay. So I think we need those. And then the other thing that's I've I've heard is being recommended that as you come in the building that that we have a thermometer, basically. Um, I don't know if it's, you know, like the hospital uses or whatever, and maybe that is something that we have everybody come through the magnetometer and have the deputy there and basically taking everybody's temperature as they enter the building every day.
I see. Correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but I'm sure, I think Mary's already doing that, isn't she?
A thermometer?
No, I mean, we're not.
We do that over at our facility and everybody goes down the hallway to the, where's the gel?
So that's something else. Maybe, Pat, are you still on?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
You could maybe look into that, getting a couple of those for our security guys.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Three weeks.
I will work on that. Um, the one thing to think of uh to keep in mind is we're talking about temporary measures. As we start working on budget and on our capital improvement plan, um, this is not going to go away and there will probably be something else down the road. We may consider doing something more permanent for those uh high customer areas in the future. So that's something to keep in mind, keep in mind.
I think that's a very good idea and we can put it in the budget and and we'll know what they're going to, we're going to, we can research it and know what they're going to cost by then.
Yeah, exactly. And maybe we phase it in and, you know, the first group is the uh the first year are the ones that are really high traffic. Um, and then the second year would be ones that aren't so high traffic like the building department. Because unfortunately, if we do something like that, it's going to require a little bit of remodeling as well to keep people from going back behind the counter like at the building department um or at DMV. So we're going to have to look at that as well.
Yep.
Um, the other thing that I'm hoping on is um the strategic, Sharon and they're talking about that strategic planning committee. We will um plan to do a virtual meeting next week. Um, life size is a great option and so we'll be using that as well. Um, I am going to do my first virtual training on Thursday and that's customer service. Right now I have three people that will be there at that place just because um I, you know, it's going to be new for all of us as we're starting to plan. Um, I did a new hire orientation um the end of March through, um, it was through a Google product, but that worked out pretty well. So um I just had the PowerPoint presentation um on my screen. I shared my screen and we were able to go through it. They could ask questions. So it was more of a a live kind of going back and forth, which was awesome. So I'm hoping to do that with the training. The other training that has to go along with our strategic planning, it's not really a training. It's more of a a a book study. Um, I'm hoping I can get more people involved in, but it's called Dare to Lead uh with Brene Brown and it really is a a book that you can read and and highlight and then uh we talk about it. And there will also be a virtual meeting. So I'm looking forward to doing that. Um.
Excuse me, Pat, who's else again?
It's Brene, Brene Brown. It's B-R-E-N-E Brown, B-R-W-O-D, you know, Brown, obviously. And the book is called Dare to Lead. Yeah, yeah, I'm kind of excited about that. Um, so it has a workbook that goes with it. When people sign up, I'll share the, um, I'll send the workbook to them so we can all work it out together. It's going to be interesting to do it virtually and so we can at some point be able to meet together. But um, yeah, I'm excited to get it going. Um, so that kind of the things that are going on with HR, obviously it's to support you, help with communication, help employees, um, and trying to keep things as normal as possible from an HR standpoint. Um, that's where we are.
Okay.
Questions?
Doug, question on that. So if you think about the screening process, is this going to be COVID-19 related expenses? And if so, we need to look at that now and not in a two-year budget timeframe. That might be a a question for the COVID-19, you know, the response team. What kind of expenses can we do? We would not be doing this without the COVID-19 related. Um, you know, that's why we're doing it. So that might be a question.
Yeah, whether, yeah, even the masks, if we buy masks for people. I mean, if they have the opportunity to make them, um, you know, that will work too. I wish my sewing machine was here, but um, yeah, I mean, there are ways to to do that.
Before we begin screening the general public, I think that the sheriff's office needs to develop some protocols as well as involving the prosecuting attorney to determine if we can in fact, if that's what we're referring to, screening those individuals coming into the building. I think that there, before we get to that point, we need to develop some some sort of protocols in conjunction with a discussion with the prosecuting attorney's office. If that's what I'm hearing correctly, that we want to screen everyone coming into the building.
That's what I've seen. The CDC is going to be recommending. So yes, we need to know, you know, what are, what um we can do and what we can't do there, yes.
There are other um, in other states, they're actually doing that as well to, you know, to go into public places like grocery stores, so.
Well, I think, you know, it's something we're going to have to do for a while, but I'm hoping maybe within a year or so, this is all going to go away and and we'll be fine. But um whatever we got to do to protect our employees.
Well, I think.
Exactly.
I think at this point in time, protecting the employees is not letting the general public come in and build.
Right.
And we may have to to work on that for a while longer, but Doug has a good point. What can we legally do, you know, and and maintain constitutional rights, so.
And another thing too to remember is that they've declared it nationally clear till the end of December. So if we decide in October in a new budget that we want to spend money for a whole bunch of plastic glass windows, we can still code that. It's COVID-19 expense and probably will still count. But I don't think there's like a big rush to make sure that you do it through now.
I just think that um small communities are probably the last ones that are going to receive those funds. And so as the as the pot runs dry.
If we receive any.
Yeah, we may have to.
Exactly.
Okay, thanks, Pat.
You bet.
There's nothing else. I'm going to move on. David, are you still on?
Nothing for me.
Okay, be safe.
I am. I am. I just have a few things to report. Uh, good morning.
Good morning, David.
We have a couple, good morning. We have a couple people in training, um, and then um a couple people that I'm cycling in on site with myself, um, to take care of things as they come up. Uh, we're finishing swapping out swapping out uh laptops with kind of a more uh secure version of a laptop and we're just about done with those. Um, dropped off a couple last week and we have a couple more to uh to do this week. Uh, been working on, we've all been working on setting up different offices and functional areas with uh video and counseling tools so they can do their jobs or like the probation officers in the court or anybody like that. Um, Tamara and Jeremy have been finishing up with the 911 workstations, which were kind of put on hold for a little bit, not because of COVID, but because of some licensing and some uh patient issues, but they're moving forward with those. Um, in one case remotely and one case on site. And then um, as Sharon mentioned, I'm working with Mary on some funding opportunities for um Lee's Fiber, um, and looking into that stuff. I know that was quick. That's all I have for today.
All right.
We're going to keep you virtual more often, David.
Thank you very much, David.
We miss you.
Keep it short.
I, yeah, it's the eye contact that throws me that I start talking.
We miss your eye contact.
All right, well, stay safe.
Yep.
Next one up is Cindy.
Hey, we continue in planning and zoning to operate eight to five Monday through Friday. Um, we sent, based upon the conversation last week about DF Development Properties and obtaining those public rights of ways, I did send out an email to all of the different fire chiefs and John Lillyhog to see what their opinion was about that fire access. Um, I received a response back from Garrett and Steve, you know, McCall and Cascade and they were in agreement that if you have over five homes on a road, it needs to be built to some sort of fire standard. So, you know, I've been communicating also with Jimmy Williams with the F Development and Jerry Conering with the F Development and I had a conversation with Jeff McFadden. Um, so we think that when we, you know, the spring, uh, summer, when we go to look at those things, that we should take a fire chief with us. And so that they, you know, can determine if that road is adequate or not for what they would need to protect it from fire.
Some of the stuff I read said it's at a minimum of 12 feet.
I don't know the specifics. I don't know the specific standard, I think it did say 12 feet.
This is out of other counties, because what I read in those conversations, the fire chiefs determine a driveway. These are not driveways, these are public roads.
Did you read the memo I sent to you?
I did, but I think there was still some confusion there, you know? If we don't have a road ordinance, we need to design our own road ordinance.
We do have road ordinances.
Okay, I, I'm going to work on this with you and, and try and get clarity on it. What I read them to say was, if you have more than five homes on a driveway, okay, I will reread it. But that is, that's the, the what, the understanding I took away from is we need a proper road going to that driveway and then a decision can be made on the driveway. But I will do some more work on this.
Okay, we.
Visit with you.
Okay, Valley County, we do have, um, for subdivision plots, we have a public road standard and we have a private road standard.
But those 20 acres are not a public plot, correct?
They are not a subdivision plot, correct?
No. So what ordinance would, would, um, that be under then?
The fire code.
And you guys have got to remember that the original intent here was to open the public access through this property to access national forest. That was the big issue so that the recreation folks can get through there into natural forest ground.
I understand that, but they also, and, and whether it's this project or any other project, that we declare a 12-foot wide or, you know, 15-foot wide public road, is that the right thing to do for people going forward? 20 years from now, are we gonna look back and go, we should have had somebody build a road into those areas? Um, if people are going to be living on them. If it's only access into the public forest, that's one thing, but if there is a potential for, for them to take and subdivide these into 20-acre parcels on a 12-foot wide road, I just, I don't agree with that. So I would like to do some more research work on what we need to do for our county roads for if there's one property on it or 50 people property on it. You know, if we're, if we're permitting things and I go back to trying to sell property over in the CR subdivision, that's a nightmare in there for fire, for everybody else. So I would just like to do some more work.
Cindy, can I just ask you too, is there any sense of urgency from, uh, folks they're talking to with DF Development to keep moving forward on this? Do they understand that one, we're waiting for snow to melt and two, that we're gonna have some other issues that we're looking at before we can make a?
Well, we have expressed to them that we would be, um, looking at those roads as, you know, snow melt, have to determine which ones, you know, are acceptable to Valley County and which ones are not. Um, and that, I think the sense of urgency was more on our part to a certain degree to, you know, establish those rights of ways before all that property is sold off to 10 different people. And, and then, you know, we would have a heck of a time trying to get those rights of ways in the future. Um, I, I think that was our intent from the beginning.
Well, we've lost a lot of public access on these old Bochi Cascade roads that everybody kind of just assumed that you could go in there and we've lost that access and that's what we're trying to get ahead of. I know there's issues with, uh, private roads versus county roads, but this is a, an easement. It's not like we're gonna take charge of these roads and, and do this if, to me, if push comes to shove, we can convert them back to a, I'm assuming, a orderized trail, but we'd still have public access through there.
Right, so, you know, it, it's not in the acceptance of these rights of ways, hopefully by deed, not easement.
Right, or by deed, yeah.
Yeah. If, I mean, if we need to change our ordinances about where you can build a house, I think that's the direction we need to come from.
Okay.
Very great.
So, okay, so I was just updating you on that. So we have reached out, they've responded. Hopefully, when we, you know, accept those deeds, we can have a fire chief, um, along to determine which ones are even acceptable. I mean, because you don't need a paved road to go to every house, um, as far as they're concerned. I mean, they just want something that'll hold up the truck and wide enough for cars to pass intermittently. Okay, um, I've been working with Michelle Grunfeld and, um, on the water management plan, reservoir lake management plans in, in Valley County. Um, we're supposed to be discussing it with Bruce Maygen, with Levin Simpson this week and what he recommends to set up the scope of that work. Um, he said he's done several of them, he can help us, you know, determine what we're going to be asking for.
So is this more like ordinance development or is this an actual lake?
This is that plan, the water management plan that, uh, Dave has been working on and Carol.
Well, as I say, kind of the ultimate goal of all of the things we've been working on is to come up with a comprehensive plan for the lakes so that we have clear defined strategies and goals that we're moving towards, not just in the creation of the ordinance, but for a long-term, you know, water quality.
So this is gonna do with water quality and?
Yes.
Lake boards and that kind of?
Everything, yeah. Comprehensive plan.
So, I mean, the idea is to go ahead and move forward with a, um, waterways ordinance specific to the Payette Lake and some of the other ones that was previously adopted and that's the one we set for May 26th public hearing. Um, but this is a more comprehensive plan to establish, um, goals and objectives into the future.
And a scientific approach.
More, more data-driven decision.
Great.
Good.
More comprehensive.
Has Bruce given a price quote yet?
No, he's helping us set up the scopes, wait and put it out for a price.
Got it.
Because he is familiar with what's needed in those, those plans. And so we're supposed to have a conference this week. Okay. Um, Lori continues to work from home. She's working, she works on notices and forms and letters and, and other types of things. She had come in for a couple hours Friday and do her mailings, uh, but we'd pre-done all the noticing, notices, so she just had to come in and use the mail machine and things. So she was here for a couple hours. Um, we're establishing a list of things that she can work on in the future, even if she is not in-house. So, um, so final plats, recreation of final plats. I have had requests about how are we going to record final plats? I know the city of McCall has one coming through and I'll have one shortly. Um, and working with, I've sent an email on how we're going to do that, whether I'm gonna meet somebody at the door and bring the plat in.
Doug, do you have any concerns about that?
I haven't had time to, uh, figure out how we're gonna handle that, but we will make sure that we're moving forward in recording those plats. Um, I asked Cindy if they were urgent or if it was critical that these plats be recorded right now, she expressed that they were not, but we will develop a procedure, uh, to meet those individuals by appointment and I anticipate that can be done within the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, that's soon enough, probably.
Does the Apica need to be here for us to do that?
No, the, the only thing they need to actually be present for is to hand the check over for the recording fees.
Well, we just hold the plat until they do.
Well, once you've recorded it, it's there. But I'm sure that they can, you know, I mean, the two I've talked to said they'd be more than happy to hand me a blank check and then record it and write the check out for them.
Can they pay online?
No.
I know I had three documents recorded in Bochi County last week, you know, it was all done through the mail and I sent them a check with them and as far as I know, everything went fine.
Plats are a little more.
Plats are bigger issues.
Yes.
We are going to continue to, um, provide that service to the general public. At this point in time, our office has just been focusing on the recordings that are coming in. Uh, Cindy brought this to my attention last week, we'll make sure that we develop a procedure in order to record the plats.
So how many do you get on a normal week? Recordings, just general?
Uh, we do an average on Mondays, probably 50.
Oh my gosh.
Um, through the rest of the week, i- it's a little bit lower than that, but then we have, you know, the online recordings with the, the mortgage companies or the title companies.
You realize there's so many?
When, when I, I've had a couple people ask, well, how am I going to record my deed? And I recommend that they actually approach a title company and go through that, that route for now.
Through a simple file.
Gotcha.
For you know, it doesn't, I think they probably charge a small fee. Um, I had an action item and that's the use of a vehicle, um, for Lori wants, Lori is not comfortable using a county vehicle at this time, you know, because someone has to start it, get it ready and everything. She would be happier if she could just use her vehicle to go post signs. Um, is there any issue with that?
The only issue would be she would not be able to get her miley free in bursts because she has the option to use a county vehicle. So if she wants to take her, pay for her own miles, that would be her choice.
The other thing is the insurance coverage. Um, we would have to be named as an additional insured in case while she was out and had an accident in some fashion.
Jeff, you had your hand up, you wanna add?
I'm gonna talk about that here in a bit, because my mechanics don't wanna get in the motor pool vehicles when they get back to fill them up or check anything because...
We can't hear you either, so the public can't either, so.
I'll, I'll wait and see what you decide once he talks to you.
Carol, do you have anything you wanna add here?
You're correct on what our policy is. Our policy is if somebody's gonna use their own vehicle and there's a vehicle available and they don't get reimbursed for that, um, I would think that, you know, understanding there's some cleanliness issues, perhaps, you know, we just put Lysol wipes in the cars and, and provide, you know, the ability to keep the vehicles clean in that kind of regard. But I think there's protocols out there that, you know, do allow for the cleaning of vehicles. So it's entirely the commissioner's decision whether you want to allow people to drive their own vehicle, but Commissioner Mopin is right, then if there's an accident, there has to be, you know, a policy that the person has on their individual car that it, it usually will cover, but, you know, I mean, some policies wouldn't cover something like that because you're using your vehicle for a work purpose and you've declared your vehicle as a residential or individual purpose. And so those policies don't cover, um, accidents and I think that's a concern for the commissioners. So, um, and I think a lot of insurers, you have to declare whether you're using your vehicle for commercial purposes and if you are, your insurance changes the dynamics of your policy completely. So even if it's intermittent use, if people are using their vehicles, you know, that's part of a liability kind of question there, so.
Well, we had this issue come up last week with some of the sheriff's deputy vehicles that were going down for maintenance or repairs or whatever, when I asked the sheriff to have their deputies wipe the car down when they leave that vehicle, so when the mechanic gets in it, it's already been wiped down, but I'm assuming the mechanic will wipe it down as well. But my feeling is, is that if there's a county vehicle available, you should use that.
I, I would say the answer to that is that's your policy. So unless you want to deviate from your policy, which is what's being asked, you know, that's, that's the question that, that's being presented to you and I think that's a decision for the commissioners to make. Because we do, if there's no vehicle available, we do reimburse for mileage, but again, the question is, you know, the cleanliness and, and I think that's a human resources question as well, but it's a commissioner.
It's just not a temporary basis.
But it's a commissioner decision.
How do you two feel?
I, I feel like that there's plenty of opportunities to clean a vehicle, but be able to use it as a motor pool. I think, you know, federal government's already done that with their motor pool vehicles and providing materials that we need with each vehicle so that before and after it gets used, you're wiping down the car. And then, you know, from Jeff's standpoint, if a mechanic's getting in it, he has the same materials there to wipe it down before he gets in it.
I, I'm sure Lori will be fine with that, she's just trying to be exceptionally careful.
Sure.
Well, I would assume that.
Because, I mean, we're not working in the same office, you know, she's trying to keep herself healthy and.
And that's, that's the goal, but I'm assuming that if someone brings in a vehicle that has been diagnosed with COVID-19, we're probably not gonna be using that vehicle for a while. I mean, that's a whole different set of standards.
I would be much more concerned over liability issues that are counted if somebody is getting used. And I don't know if we've addressed that in the past, but we probably need to make sure that we're addressing that.
It's in our policy.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, Kent, when you, um, make your decision this afternoon about the May 15th and the clarification of that, can you clarify, um, the employee in and out of the county and who can actually come to your home? Um, because I think in your original order, emergency declaration, you said we couldn't go out of state and then last week I think you changed it to out of county. Now is that the Valley County emergency thing or is that tied in with the government, the governor's declaration?
That's a good question and I'll talk that through at 12.
Yep. Got it on the list.
Okay. That's all I have.
All righty. Any questions for Cindy?
No, thanks a lot, Cindy.
Yep, thank you. Larry.
Morning.
Morning. Well, yesterday was so wonderful, Easter, such a, a time of hope and?
Yeah.
And promise and, and I come in here and you guys are talking about death. No, I'm kidding. Um, so, been busy, I've been helping my guys and the one thing I want to make sure we don't forget is the guys that we do lay off, um, some of our guys, when we talk about internet and computers, they don't have that ability, so I have helped the guys get signed up for unemployment and I'm trying to follow it, make sure that everything went through a form. Um, real quickly, I want to talk about the South Fork Ramp Project. As you, as you guys know, that, that originally started because of a lot, well, it originally started because the Forest Service didn't consult the county on some things they were doing on a project and so the, the county sued the Forest Service. And, uh, uh, that was settled on the basis of certain things were gonna happen. Well, those things aren't happening at this point. Um, we are in the process of talking with, and, and what I'm really talking about is Little Buckhorn is, is the main, most areas are fine with all the offsets, but the Forest Service has found that, um, the Little Buckhorn Trail, which is a 18-mile, a new 18-mile ATV trail, um, there wasn't, they don't feel there was enough offsets. And so of course then we were asked to remove all the ML1 roads off the forest. Um, we're in consultation right now, when I say we, it would be the recreation group of that eight years long collaboration. Um, we're talking to them about, uh, possibly, we want to go in and we want to look at these roads, actually see what we're talking about. Of course, the tribes want them all off the landscape, which that's just normal. Um, there's maybe a few, we can go ahead and say, yeah, those need to go away because they're in a bad spot, they're a paring area or they're, or they're just too, the road is such a bad shape, they're still getting in the rubber, we, we need to get rid of those roads. So everything is really on hold until we get, can get over there and see what we're looking at. My question to you guys is, do you guys want to be involved in this a little bit more? Do you want to go over and look or do you want me just to come back and report to you what's going on? Um, I have all the confidence that we have some really great people working on this project. I know I've, I've sent some emails out and, um, I, I think we're heading in a good direction, but I, we, we won't make any decisions until we talk to you guys about it, so.
Larry, my personal feeling is if we have the time, you know, I could certainly go, I've been all over Buckhorn, that was my place in high school for years and years and years that I rode the country, but I don't know if I'd have time, you know, depends on when it is, what time of year, to be able to go and see these things, but.
Well, I'm really, we're really not worried about the Buckhorn Trail, we've all got an agreement on that, um, the tribes, NOAA, um, ICL, all, all the, all the players involved. The problem is the amount of offsets and what we want to be careful of is that we don't, keep in mind every time in, in the future, because we've only got a limited amount, oh, as we know, recreation opportunities over there and that's one of our biggest points as we're watching, I, I guess, it, it's like we're saying, we've got plenty of ghost towns in Idaho, we don't need another one and that is the direction that Yellow Pine is going in. How do we save Yellow Pine? And, and obviously the only thing we can do is give them that recreational opportunity, keep the businesses open and keep that town thriving. Well, the problem is that in order to have more recreational opportunities, you have to have offsets. If they remove all the ML1 trail, a road as it is now, there's no more offsets, we're done, there will be no more recreational and that's where. There will be no more recreational and that's where the controversy, and I don't even think it's controversial, everybody knows the truth of it. Um, we just gotta be really careful what comes off there and only enough to make the offset for that Buckhorn Trail.
So Larry, when you're asking for, you know, I'm happy to engage also, but the South Fork Ramp Project, who is the group that's doing this? Is this the Payette Forest Coalition, the Boise Forest Coalition or a separate group or who are you representing?
Good question and I'm representing the county. I was put on that, this, this is the Big Creek-Gillipine Collaboration, which was ordered after that lawsuit. It was or, um, with the negotiations with Senator Rich's office and the judge's windmill, I think. They ordered that this collaboration take place. And so this collaboration went on for seven years, 11 months and one weekend. And Doug enjoyed every single minute of it, I will guarantee you.
So you have been approved to be on that coalition and therefore you're representing the county anyway?
Yeah, we have to have, so right now it's gotta be people that were on there. So it was myself and it was, uh, Commissioner Kripchank and then Jeff showed up a little bit on it. And with the commissioner gone, it kind of handed it down. So, so in order to, in order to comment now, you had to be an original player in it because the comments came from the recreational group supporting and that's where we are right now. And I, I think we're getting quite a bit of support from the, the Forest Service. We're gonna go in and look at them and I, I believe they'll go with whatever we decide. The objection hearing was interesting, there's a.
Objection to the objection?
Yeah, objecting to the objection, yeah. Uh, one of the groups that was in the objection hearing is no longer talking to us. But we'll move forward. I, I feel John Robinson has sent out some pretty good, um, comments on it so that we can work with ICLs on it and we'll get over it. It's just gonna take time. It's like everything else, it's take time. But of course, our long-term goal is, is saving Yellow Pine. And everybody says, well, Stibnite may save Yellow Pine. Now, Stibnite would save Yellow Pine for 20 years. What happens after 20 years is gone? We need sustainability and recreation is the only way to get that.
So when you're saying that you had to be on the original coalition in order to have a voice, are you saying that your name is attached to that?
Yes, it is.
So it's not the county's seat and it's really your seat on that?
My name, my name is attached to it as working for the county.
If you need help and input, I'm happy to do that also. But it sounds like you've secured that seat anyway and are, are representative there.
Yeah, it's pretty, that's, that's something that, um, it took me a while to completely understand how all those systems work. That we've got to comment on everything and we got to comment on our comments and object to our objections. And it's just, it, it's the only way to stay in there and it's really hard for somebody that doesn't know what's happening on the ground. They've done the, the ground truthing, um, to be able to do that. And, and I've stayed really involved in that. I think it's extremely important and that'll be the same way when I'm gonna make comment on the, um, Nez Perce Clearwater Plan, um, here real soon. Because even though that's not in our county and not our forest, the decisions that are made, because that is a forest plan, the decisions that are made in that forest plan all trickle down to all the other forest plans. And so we gotta be really careful what sneaks through, what gets through. And, and sometimes it just gets through by accident because it was there before. And that's probably the biggest problems we've ever had is that things just kind of roll ball, they roll downhill. And, and we've got things, decisions that were made 30 years ago still affecting us today.
I, I'd be a little concerned about you commenting as a Valley County employee on things that are taking place outside of the county. That's the only thing that comes up in my mind.
Yeah, not as.
And I appreciate the fact that you, you know, I, I see the big picture also of these collaborative efforts. But I do think that like from your standpoint as an employee of Valley County, that needs to be your view. And things that are beyond that or outside of your view as an employee, that's my opinion.
Commissioner, when I comment on outside our area, I comment as personally. I don't comment as Valley County.
Yeah, that's.
If I commented on Valley County, I would bring the comments to you guys and have you sign them. The only reason this one on the Big Creek-Gillipine, I mean, I, I was pretty much ball, ball and told on that whole thing and it aired it.
So you made a comment that I want to clarify also, you said that, um, this lawsuit was based upon some things happening and that FERTA was specifically called out, I believe, still in the, in this.
Say that again?
The FERTA on the South Fork was called out in this plan. We talked about that a couple of weeks ago. So was that part of something that was a part of the original lawsuit or?
No.
Is this being impacted?
No, not at all.
Would drive.
What hap, what happened on that is one of the objectors said that he didn't want to see that happen, even though that isn't having anything to do with the plan. So because it was brought up in the objection hearing, I reported it to you. That's the only reason that was brought up at all. And, and in the objection hearing, it basically said that isn't part of the plan, so. But, uh, yeah, and then I came in and I talked to Commissioner Hasbrook and I just wanted to make sure that we had sent that letter in saying that we weren't gonna take the FERTA. Just make sure that everything followed through on it.
I think it would be admirable for you two to get involved in the coalitions and start going to them because there's a lot of information you have to deal with. You have to show up at least 50% of the time in order to have a vote. So you gotta commit to it and. And I've been on Boise Forest now for seven years, I think. Um, that, and also this is one of the reasons we hired Larry in the beginning because he was involved with a lot of the knowledge and he knew the folks in these coalitions and we wanted him to start going because we couldn't do it all.
No, and it's, it's getting, it's getting a little bit more convoluted as time goes on. So this next week is the Idaho Forest Restoration Projects, uh, which is a, a four-hour conference calls Tuesday and four-hour conference calls, um, Wednesday. And so it gets so complicated. Now we have shared stewardship projects. So when the collaboration with the Boise or the Payette says, okay, we're gonna support this project, we're looking at, we're looking at the EA, we're going through the entire project, we're looking at full NEPA. Well, that isn't gonna happen anymore because now we've got projects that is partly ideal, partly Payette, partly Boise, part private. And so, um, for the collaborations to vote and say, yes, we support this project is really difficult because they're doing a, a new NEPA where it's conditional NEPA. So they do a mini NEPA on it and then as they get into the project, they'll find an issue. Maybe it's archaeology, maybe it's, uh, something like that and they'll do the NEPA as they get there. So how do you vote ahead of time to support a project that you don't know what's gonna happen? And that's what the part of this, uh, conference call will be Tuesday and Wednesday. I'm kind of looking forward to it too because I want to see how other, it's, it's a group. So what this is for is a group of collaborations, uh, private landowners, um, loggers, um, they get together once a year and discuss some of the issues and that's.
But the shared stewardship is also a different funding mechanism.
Yes, it will. Yeah, it does.
We maintain a portion of that still, correct?
Yes. Yeah.
Tell me when the, the meetings are and I'll be happy to jump on.
Well, I'll, I'll send you the email on this one. I'm struggling getting signed up, uh, through the county. Um, it keeps kicking me off the, because it doesn't have some kind of security or something on it, uh, but I'll send it to you. Um, most of those ones that I get kicked off from the county, I can just do on my phone and listen. It doesn't kick me off that way. Let's see, um, I've been on the PFC Steering Team Conference Calls, Idaho Conservation League Conference Call, Rec Group, the Big Creek-Gillipine Conference Call, ISSA IDPR. As we know, that whole number of certificate and all our tags are changing. And we were discussing the fact that they are gonna be shut down for a period of time. So you can't even go on and get an ATV tag or a motorcycle tag. They're gonna call me the day they're ready to start up so I can go on real quick and see if it works. Cause they're gonna have a couple of people, you know, test it out.
And Larry, there's some information there that we should be sharing with the public. When that comes back up, you need to work with McKenzie so that she can be sharing, you know, choose 43B or whatever it is in order to get that funding mechanism.
Yeah, and it did, it did go out on Facebook. I saw it on Facebook, I saw it on, uh, on Channel 7. Uh, it was in the Statesman, it's been in the Star News. Um, they, IDPR hit it pretty hard, but yeah, we should, we should continue it ourselves.
Let McKenzie know how we can actually take that up and share amongst us also.
Um, I've also been working with, um, uh, uh, the Stibnite, um, Association because there's a grant project there and I'm gonna get the, the, everything for that. I did send, uh, Mary Rosen three projects for the lot fund. She told me she's done everything, she's everything, she's ready to submit, it's gotta be in by the 15th. She's waiting for one thing from Clerk Miller and then, uh, she'll send those in. I did try, I tried to do the, Commissioner Bingham, did you do the trails seminar?
I didn't, no.
I got kicked off it so many times, you know, it was a long one and it just kept kicking me off and I dialed in and kicking me off. I got a few things out of it, but it, it didn't turn out to be what I think they thought it was gonna be.
I just sent it to the agenda and it didn't seem like it was exactly what I was looking for.
Yeah, me either, me either. Um, we had, uh, of course our Wolverine collaboration, we've had a couple of conference calls on that. Don't want to get too much into detail on that. I, I can tell you that, uh, Winter Wildlands did file a lawsuit against Fish and Wildlife asking the Wolverine be listed as we knew they were going to, after they told us they weren't going to because we were in the middle of collaboration. One, one of the things that we've noticed and we got a, a couple of really good retired fishing game biologists that are helping us on that, on the Wolverine situation. Talking about, if you look at the map where the Wolverines are, the most Wolverines are in the area that we have the most motorized recreation. And he says, they're looking at it a little backwards. What it shows him is that the Wolverines have adapted to the motorized recreation. We have a, a thriving population of Wolverines in that area. Where we don't have a thriving population of Wolverines is where the non-motorized community, um, is. And we're, we don't know why, we just think we need further study. And I will tell you that I've, I've found a couple of sources that are willing to fund that study so we can get, have the ongoing say. Nobody wants a Wolverine to go out, we want to protect it, it's a cool little animal. We just feel pretty good about the way it's adapted. They're having problems in Alaska because they're moving into the towns in Alaska. Yeah, so anyway, that, that's kind of where we are in the Wolverine thing. We actually have a conference call this afternoon. I'll participate in on that. I've been working on, one of the things that you guys were talking about early is, earlier was what do we do when this is done? This COVID thing. You know, it isn't like you go turn a light switch on and everything starts over again. We've gotta make plans for how we do our startup. And I'm putting together a plan for how my department will start up. We've got a lot of issues out there. We've got the, uh, ramp down here, our, our Raph ramp has, took a lot of damage this winter. I, I need to talk, I've been trying to get ahold of Idaho Waters and Corps of Engineers to see if I need a permit to fix it. I don't think we do because it was an existing permit. We've got the well at Wellington isn't working. It's.
What? That's a brand new system.
Yeah, well, I, I.
It freezes break?
It doesn't have power to it. I, I think.
Oh, it's electrical.
It's electrical issue, yeah. And it's not, it's not a big one, but we'll get it fixed. We got a leak in the Wellington roof. That's part of my plan is to apply for that grant with the Stibnite to do the roof down at Wellington if I can get all the information quick enough. But I just think it's really important for all the departments to, to be ready. Cause if it's the 15th, they say go, we better be ready for that. If it's the 30th and they say go, we better be ready for that and how we're going to do it. How we're gonna bring people back on. I don't think we can bring them all on at once. It's, it's just gotta be done right. So that's where I am.
You also have an action item?
I, well, actually I do, the one we were gonna do last.
The Simmobile Trail Grooming Program, you needed that finalized.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I, like I said, I sent a, uh, emails to Commissioner Mopin and I've never seen that report before.
Did we approve that last month or we're just waiting to sign or?
I just think you wanted me to read it, make sure it was okay and it was just fine.
We did not approve it.
Remember what we did. But anyway, you have it, we have it in our emails. Do you have a paper copy with you?
I, I can bring one up.
You have one, Doug? Okay, does everybody understand what this is? Just a form, performance review and this goes to the Forest Service and Parks and Rec.
Yes.
Okay? So I'd entertain a motion to approve this project performance report.
I'll make a motion that we approve the performance report for Simmobile Trail Grooming Program.
Who's the second all favorite, please say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, I'll sign it and then I'm assuming you'll copy it, get one to Doug and ship this one to where it's supposed to go.
One back to, yeah.
Okay?
Larry, how you doing on policies and procedures? You're gonna be hearing from me all the time.
Well, I, 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 it, as I get to it, I'll get to it. I mean, that's all I can do. I think what we're gonna do now is, is start out with summer policies and procedures because we're almost to that point and we kind of skipped the period in there. So how do we get started in the summer? How do we get things going and, and?
And your part-time employee is gonna need to see some of that stuff so that he understands, you know?
Oh, yeah.
What his responsibilities are.
Absolutely. And I've actually.
Seventy-one.
Lot of training.
Yep.
Okay, um, I went by the ramp the other day and it's still under a lot of snow.
There was a group that came in and looked at that covered ramp last year.
Yeah, I was gonna look and see if I could find there.
Was that corner down there that was damaged still in the snow?
Yeah, it's all, it's that deep in the middle of it. I mean, it's, it's a north face slope so the sun doesn't get to it. Um, you want, see if I can find that guy's name and I'll forward it to you, the guy that took all the.
Idaho Whitewater?
Yeah, I will. And, uh, they were gonna come back in the spring and fix it.
I know we've got that, we've got the funds for the materials. It would just be nice having them provide the, all the labor on it. I'm a little concerned about how we're gonna fix it.
Um, I think you could pull back together with some binders and stabilize it pretty well, Larry. I don't think it's a redo thing.
Maybe drop in a couple of those eco blocks on the west side.
Upstream side.
Yeah.
Push that away. Not finding it.
Love that term eco block. Basically just a cement concrete.
Here it is. I'm gonna forward this guy, his name is Kevin Jones.
Okay.
And he's the one that did the work. I'll forward that information to you and then you can work with him.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay?
Thanks.
Um. Mary, are you on, with us? Apparently not. So then we'll move right on into, uh, Road and Bridge. Welcome, Jeff.
Morning.
Morning. Everything good?
Yep. Kind of a pain, but we're working through it just like everybody else. Leaving some of my staff at home that have health issues.
Not COVID related, right?
Not COVID related, but underlying, whatever you want to call them, underlying conditions. They probably don't need to be out in public, don't need to be around people. Our office is locked, we had IP lock the door 24 hours a day so nobody can go in and out, including the crew. They have direct instructions from me to stay out of that shop. They're going from their vehicle to the county vehicle, out doing what they're doing.
And is the issue with the mechanics wiping down cars, all that's been resolved?
Yeah, I mean, Pete looks like a doctor when he goes out and gets in a sheriff's office vehicle, but it's part of the game. I mean, we don't trust them to mark, to wipe them down. And I'm sure they don't trust Pete to wipe them down every time they're in and out of it. What if they missed the door handle? What if they missed? We just found out the other day that this virus lives on steel for seven days. What do we deal with down there at the road department? Everything is steel.
Yep.
So we're working through it. Um, I'm back pretty much full-time. So I'm the only one that's allowed in that office besides the mechanics. And Mickey, when she comes in, she looks like a doctor when she came in last week to do claims with me, so.
Good, good.
I guess one of the main things is, I sent an email to you guys, we'll discuss it now, is the workers coming from Cray Construction Lewiston. Their surveyors are gonna probably show up next week. We're gonna find out more at this pre-con that I believe Dave responded to the date. I don't know if all you, if y'all are gonna be on that or not, but.
I think Dave can handle it. Of course, he didn't want to.
Absolutely. It's, it's just a pre-conference, pre-construction conference. Mainly gonna be, I think me and Dave will be doing a lot of listening to Western Federal Lands and the construction engineer that's based in McCall right now. All the Western Federal Lands employees that are showing up this week or next week are ported by John Henderson to lock yourself down for two weeks. The, the people with Cray Construction's a different story, they're gonna be like the Atlee. Friday night rolls around six o'clock, toom, off to go to Lewiston for the weekend. Sunday night they come back.
They're in essential service.
That, that's what I told John, I go, the contract's in place. That, that's what I told John. I go, the contract's in place. They're essential. We just need to make sure that they're clean and-
Whatever they can.
Minimize their amount of contact with the community, really. I mean, they're getting back and forth like that. Really need to be careful.
And I don't know where they're staying because the vacation rentals are shut down. Hotels might put them up because they're essentials. Do they have to have letters for that, saying that they're essentials to get into a motel? No?
Some of them are making them sign, you know, statements.
Oh, okay.
So, they may have their own statement that has to be approved or signed. But-
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they are, hopefully, I don't know where they're gonna be eating. I don't know all that stuff, but, you know, they need to try and shelter as much as they can while they're with us.
Okay, that's actually where they're leaving every week.
Yeah.
Oh.
Commissioners, I just wanted to add that I think some of the latest standards are, if there's people who are particularly essential workers, who may or may not have been exposed, but the new guidelines are that we require them to wear masks when they're going to come. They can't maintain social distancing and that we require them to take their temperature before they're starting work. So, it might be just a protocol that we want to establish that, you know, if you're coming in as an essential worker, we're gonna require if you can't maintain social distancing, CDC guidelines are you wear a mask. And for those types of workers, that they take their temperature in the morning.
Did you send us just a blurb of what you just said so that we can discuss it in the con?
Yes, and I think I sent you that at the beginning that that was the latest CDC guideline, what they were saying.
Yeah, there's a long list of things.
So, potentially that's something else. If these people are coming in, we might want to say for the health and safety of the community, we, we would require that. But, and I think you have authority to do that under Title 31. That's for regulating the health and safety of your community. But, and I don't think it's that restrictive, so I think that's something else. But I'm gonna imagine that most of these employers, if they know they've got people traveling from different counties, they would be wanting to take those precautionary measures anyways, so.
Well, is there, excuse me, I'm sorry. Is there that much interaction at the job site? I mean, these guys are, it would be when they're going wherever they're spending the night.
That's the concern.
That's where the concern would be. It's not on the jobs.
Right.
Groceries.
Yeah, food, whatever, yeah.
Right.
Most construction guys are kind of isolated anyways. They're probably, I don't know where they're gonna be staying.
Because I can't, I don't know about the campgrounds because I know that's a place where they oftentimes come in and bring their rigs in, right? So, I don't know. Commissioner Mopin, you might be more informed as to what hotels are still open. But I know like the Boulder Creek Inn, they've closed until the governor's guidance after April 15th. So, I think that's one of the things we just need to be concerned about.
I think all of them in McCall are still open, but requesting people sign an essential services. So, and McCall actually did reach out to the Attorney General's office. And they are following the government guidelines out of the governor's office. And so, like, Whitetail, they're requesting if they're coming in from out of area to 14-day shelter before they actually are allowed to go to work. But this is a different situation where these guys are moving in and out of the community every week. And so, that is something that I think we need to address. And I don't know, you know, what, what can we put on them?
I, I think that you should urge the Department of Health and Welfare through the conversations you have with the governor to say if people are coming into communities for these reasons, that they should be required to take their temperature because they think that's one of the initial signs. And sometimes people don't realize if they have a heightened temperature until, you know, it could, it spikes at a higher rate. But a heightened temperature would, would be an indicator of a problem. So, I think that's something the Department of Health and Welfare, as we're starting to reopen up our communities, that would certainly be something that we would want to take a look at, you know.
But that, that would be something that we would impose on, like, the hotel?
It would be at the company or who's ever doing it, you know. I think it falls into place too. You were talking about reopening up the courthouse. Potentially you can buy temperature, you know, that you don't have to touch anybody and you can wave it in front of them and see if they're, you know, have a temperature. And I think that's certainly a safety precaution that as we bring people back in, it's certainly something we might want to think about. But I would think employers would want to, you know, that, that would be something we should, at least at this point, encourage employers to do. Whether Health and Welfare promotes that and requires that is a different story. But I think we should say, you know, we urge you to follow the CDC guidelines, which is if you can't maintain social distancing, which on the job site, it sounds like they can, but it sounds like, you know, if they're going into gas stations or anything like that to purchase food, that, you know, we urge them to use a mask. And we also urge the companies to take temperatures, you know, to make sure that people are okay.
So, is that, do you think that's gonna be required for the restaurants?
I have no idea. I don't know what's gonna be-
The restaurants that are getting slammed right now?
Yeah, I think that, you know, I'd be anxious to see what the governor's going to do and what the CDC guidelines are gonna come out. Because as we start to reopen our communities, I think that those are ways that we can at least continue, you know, to, to maintain at least some semblance of lowering the amount of contaminants that are in the air, so. But again, I don't know what the US government's going to prescribe and I certainly don't know what the governor's going to through the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare. And they would have the authority to do that and to require it, so.
So, what I'm hearing you say, Carol, is that you feel like we have the ability to take someone's temperature before they enter the building without-
Here?
Overstepping any kind of-
I think that's gonna be determined, but I don't think it's that intrusive. I guess I would say that at this point in time because you can get temperatures that you don't have to put in your mouth or you don't have to, you know.
It's usually, it's just the forehead, infrared.
Right. And so, I think it's, it's pretty non-intrusive and I think it's gonna be something that might be helpful. So, I think that we'll be seeing some more guidance on things like that and we'll, and we'll see what Health and Welfare has decided to order.
But you feel like we can put that in, like, this conversation that we're having with contractors and say, we highly recommend these steps?
You can recommend anything you want. And I think that's what, I think that's the guidance, is to just provide some, you know, we strongly urge you. Obviously, you understand this community doesn't have the health resources. If people were to start getting sick, and these are some of the guidelines that we think and we recommend, you know, and urge you to follow. So, but again, that's, you know, they're a private business and they are traveling per the governor's orders, so they're complying with that, so, you know.
Well, maybe part of that conversation too, Dave, Jeff, is what do you, where are your workers gonna stay while they're here on the job? Are they staying in a camper or are they gonna stay in a hotel? If they're gonna be in a hotel, can we put them all in the same hotel so that we're not scattered all over town with different workers? Or, I don't know, these are things I would assume you'd want to kind of find out.
You guys are on a conference call. I just want that too.
Yeah, and I'm guessing they, you know, like they've done in the past, they've rented like two or three-bedroom places and then put, you know, three or four people per bedroom.
A lot of them were camping out up on Warren Wagon last year. I mean, I think probably at least two-thirds of the folks that were working were there in that.
All, all the workers were-
Copper Creek area or Rush Creek.
The upper, the super canyon stuff.
In town.
Right.
So, could we make that, not, not mandatory, but a big option that, hey, if you guys want to stay in campers, we'll allow the use of Rush Creek or a campground, whatever. We'll keep that just for you guys.
I think you need to be careful.
I know, that's what I'm asking.
Before you start doing that, I think, I think we should wait to see what, for the guidance the governor's giving us, whether he's gonna continue the lockdown or, you know, pass the April 15th, the mandatory stay-at-home self-isolation. Or, I think I would wait until you see what the governor's plan is to do with that. Because that's where your authority is gonna come from. And at this point, I don't think you have the authority. And I certainly don't think you want to be saying, I've selected this contractor, you can stay, but the rest of you cannot go into an area. So, I mean, I certainly think you want to be universal in the way that you make your decisions. So, I think the first step is to find out what the governor's gonna do. And I, I wish we had that guidance because it's two days away, but I would imagine that he, he's waiting to find the most recent and up-to-date current science that's available. And I'm sure that's what the delay is, so. I think as soon as we find that out, I think we can make more plans. It's unfortunate that that's gonna happen after your, after this Board of Commissioners meeting. But I think we can respond to it by putting it on the agenda next week to discuss whatever the governor has. I think that's probably appropriate.
Okay. All right.
What else, Jeff?
We had a little accident while I was on vacation with the plow truck on Big Creek Summit. I'm working with Doug. Doug's gotten a hold eye crimp. Nothing happened to the truck, but we basically totaled one of our brand-new plows, $16,000.
One of the sweet plows?
Yes, one of our big, one of our big Monroes. The lady, I can't remember what her name is, Sherry or Sharon or something like that. She's, uh, working with me right now. I'm getting her prices. It almost sounds like they're gonna cover that under insurance. So, we gotta pay $2,500 for a, $16,000 was two years ago, so it's probably 16,517 now. I don't, I don't know. Working on getting that replaced.
Just an accident, Jeff, or something that you need to do a little bit more training on or is this a human resources issue?
Actually, he has written up for it because he was told not to do the turnouts and he did. This is his second one, so one more he's done.
Is that, is that what's on that trailer? Is that the new one or is that just another?
That's the one that's totaled.
That's the one that's, we're working on, I think, to look at it.
Yeah. I don't, he wasn't going real fast, but the weight of those trucks and cutting edge broke through the snow floor, got into the gravel, plowed stop, momentum of the truck kept going and, yeah.
But no damage to the mounts on the truck?
There's a little bit on the truck, but it's fixable. Stretch wanted to beef them up more than what they are, but we need something to break in the front of that truck instead of transferring some kind of breakage down the frame of that truck. So, we're gonna leave everything just the way it is because they're working just fine. It broke where it was supposed to.
You've addressed it.
Yeah, we're, uh, the gate is up at profile.
Locked.
It is not locked and there is a 60, there's enough room to get a 60-inch wide vehicle around it.
And this is just for spring?
Spring breakup, yes.
Everybody knows that. We're not closing the road.
Even, even Midas is running their UTVs back and forth to prevent that running issue in the road.
Good.
They've had a, they had a couple of landslides back there caused by the earthquake. They worked on it. They hired Seats, a lot of yellow pine to go help on one of them. Uh, the aftershock Saturday afternoon caused a pretty significant damage to the South Fork Road down by Fitz and Creek below Crassell. It's still passable, but there is a big hole in the road. Lot of rocks down, lots of trees down, right in that same area, so.
Where'd you say it was exactly?
Uh, between Crassell and Fitz and Creek.
Oh.
Just above Fitz and Creek where it comes in. Yeah, it's, I had a gentleman stop by this morning and bang on the door and I went out there and he told me about it. So, I called the Forest Service and they're, it's probably a $20,000 fix, so keep that in your head for that road.
Forest Service?
We, we have not, I know of had any damage on ER roads because of this earthquake. Midas had some. I can't get into the back country to check on our bridges. All the bridges out here seem to be okay. Nothing, nothing's showing. Abstein Bridge in Yellow Pine. I've been working with Mary. I can purchase a Big R Bridge, 80 feet long, 16 feet wide for $91,000. Cheap.
For a bridge, it is.
For a bridge.
That's a long bridge.
Fully rated for 105,000-pound trucks. I'd probably have to hire a contractor to put it in because it's gonna take cranes and everything else to set an 80-foot-long bridge in there. I don't even know how they do it. Can't get down that road with an 80-foot-long bridge, but I'm sure there's ways of doing it. Mary's working on that. I sent Carol a deal for Jay Jakes, about a one-time permit to remove the snow for, now that the grooming's done. Jay said he, Commissioner Mopin, I believe, I don't have a problem with it. Talked to the contractor. He's looking at hiring and I said, take it, okay?
Because he goes in and flattens the co-verted.
This is a contractor that I, it's, uh, Dirud. He's probably gonna be the one doing it. He's already got permits through me for doing Boulder Lake Road, Flat Place.
I think it would look better if he had one, okay?
I think that's just standard policy. I think we need to follow the policy down as well.
Were you good with that permit that I sent you? Okay, yep.
Good.
Okay.
And Jay did call me and what I said was, call Jeff.
Okay, and he, he was on it pretty hard a couple of weeks ago. I got a revised one-time permit for him. Then he called me back or emailed me back and said, you know, with this COVID going on, we're stuck here in Washington for a while, so no big hurry. Let's go ahead and go with the permit. So, I'll get that to him today. When I get back, he can get his innotarized and sent back to us.
Well, while we're on that discussion, I'm trying to remember where we are in that process, but I think the last I remembered, Jake Strohmeyer, Forester, was just waiting for us to send a letter requesting a reroute of that. Do you remember, Larry? He talked to him?
I thought we were, at this point, we're waiting for that road to actually get surveyed to find out how much room we have for that first section.
The problem was when we came up on top, we crossed into two lots of, that subdivision. And when I talked to their real estate agent, he said that they're looking at something different, maybe trading those two lots back to the Forest Service for something else. And he would let us know. That's where that process is. So, it's kind of in their hands.
In Forest Service?
No, in, in the developer, the owner of all that.
Oh, okay.
That would change a lot.
That would solve a lot of problems if they could swap ground with somewhere else.
Okay.
I'll try and give the guy a call and see where they are in that.
Okay. And I was trying to get, I missed the conference call on Western Federal Lands last week. My Pacific time, mountain time thing was messed up, so I missed it. Doug kind of explained it to me. So, now it sounds like we're waiting for them to release a check to us from Phase 1?
Correct.
Before we pay the match on Phase 2?
Correct.
Okay.
Then there's not enough in it to pay Phase 2. We have to come up with more?
That was, that was what I didn't understand.
I'm sure Dave's shaking his head at the same time going, well, we were told that-
There was.
Well, so they want us, they want to close out Phase 1 and then reopen and have a separate payment made for Phase 2. But what I didn't understand is based on the size and scale, they're gonna reissue a check to us and then it sounds like the amount that they're telling us that we're gonna have to pay is higher than what we had thought we were gonna pay. Is that correct?
And they were also gonna provide us with our records of exactly what our first match.
Yeah, I did not see that.
And we have not received that yet, so we need to follow up with Leslie, excuse me, and find out where the, those records are.
Because according to my, my brain, we should have a pretty significant amount coming back. But the bookkeeping side of it, I can see what they're wanting to do. They can't just take Phase 1 money, roll it over into Phase 2. They've got to pay it out and then get it back. It's, it's gotta be a bookkeeping deal, but it's-
What they're gonna do is, how soon are they gonna cut us a check, did they say?
No.
So, how can we go on with Phase 2 without that being done?
We talked about it was in Jeff's budget.
Yeah, I've, I've got the money in the budget. It's just gonna cut into some of my grader patching and stuff I was gonna do this summer. It's, it's pretty, I'm, I'm pretty much gonna spend every penny in my budget that I had budgeted this year, which is what the public wants me to do, so.
Well, maybe Doug, when you talk to her again, ask her how soon before we see that money?
We were expecting that money to be released immediately, but it was also expected that they provide us with a report of the actual accounting from their end of how our match was applied and we have not received that.
Yeah, they, they went through two or three different, the only finance person that's left is that Janice Dance. Everybody else, everybody else's names I see attached to these emails, they didn't even exist two years ago, so. People stepping into other people's shoes trying to tie up loose ends, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Jeff, I got one more thing. I did give your number to a person from the Forest Service. They're looking for some comments from you regarding the draft environmental impact statement for STIB night. And specifically, they have a whole chapter in there on transportation and what the effects are going to be on Valley County roads for the Midas project.
You got that to me?
I sent her your contact info.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, they're trying to get our comments or input on that as soon as they can so they can continue on that process.
And we're, me and the operations manager for STIB night, Kyle Fender, starting to get a agreement in place, a road use agreement. Which if STIB night goes, it'll be good for us in a way because that's the one plow route we won't have to worry about. They will plow the road all the way to the highway.
One of the questions too that came up was, uh, they want to keep Worm Lake Summit open.
Yes.
But they do not want public on that road. But they do not want public on that road?
Yes, and that was brought up a couple of years ago. So, they'd probably have to put a gate there with a shack, just like they had back there at Yellow Pine when they were first starting going.
Okay.
And then, then again, it goes back on the recreation of where the snow biker's going to park, are they going to group cabin creek?
Yeah, I was going to say, specifically, we're just looking at the roads right now for your conversation.
To see what kind of damage they're going to do in the next 20 years to the road.
Yep.
And there will be some kind of language in that agreement of any rutting in excess of one inch will be repaired by Midas Gold Incorporated or something like that. It's, it's going to be a pretty hefty agreement. Signs, guardrails, bridges.
Avalanche control.
Avalanche control, yeah.
So, Jeff, with that process right now, what I'm, what I'm hearing is that they're just wanting your input to the draft EIS. Once that draft EIS is either approved or denied, then the county will move into the phase of actually doing agreements.
Yes.
And that would be, you know, you'd present to us what that looks like and give us all an opportunity to.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm putting, I'm helping Kyle, but I've kind of put most of it in Kyle's hands, because he's the one wanting to use our roads. Like, I told him, Michael, you need, there's other mines, thousands of them out there that have agreements with counties, states. Let's start gathering those up and just start picking pieces and parts out of different agreements, and we'll get our own, and then we'll sit down and nitpick.
You know, Jeff, is there like a bond that we, that they could issue for a deposit of a certain amount of money at the end that comes back?
That's something we'd have to talk about, because it's not really a construction deal, but we've got a good idea how much it cost to rebuild that road last time, and it was about, geez, what were we at, Doug? 12 million? Something like that to rebuild that 35-month, well, it wasn't even to rebuild Big Creek or Warm Lake Summit, that was just a chip seal and some patches, but the rest of it from the bottom of Warm Lake Summit to town out here was like $13 million.
I think until we get through the draft EIS.
Yes.
And see what, you know, is being required of the Forest Service and, you know, ITD's going to have a large conversation. There's a lot more conversation about the roads going forward after they get through this next phase.
Yep.
In my opinion, we've been a lot more engaged with it, but.
Well, and I think we need to look at, see where we're going with housing and employee housing, and there's a lot of things that are going to have to come online for this to happen.
Yeah.
But that's afterwards, right? That's after the draft.
Well, before, somewhere in the middle of this, we're going to get involved in a lot of, a lot of this kind of stuff.
Right.
One of the big issues I know is getting fuel back there, especially along any fish stream, and so there's some concerns about that.
That's one reason they're going over Warm Lake Summit, because the South Fork has some pretty strict fuel guidelines on it, plus there are weight restrictions on the South Fork.
You've seen the draft EIS, what's out there so far? Is any of this being addressed?
It's such a large document, I've been concentrating on, you know, a few specific parts of it when I've been looking through it. I mean, it's thousands, it's huge.
And we'll forget something, we always do, but.
Especially the draft.
We just sit down, we'll spend a day, and we'll go through it and look at it.
Maybe we can all start looking at it.
It's available on the Forest Service website.
Is it?
Starting to get a little late for the high elevation to start melting, but Midas is watching the East Fork Road pretty close. They have instructions from me, if there's a log jam, get down there and kick the logs loose ASAP if they can catch it. We won't get high water back there until about the second week of May, unless we get a rain-on-snow event. They're, they're watching it.
Bet they can't burn that pile now while it's submerged.
It's sitting there all winter, it ain't going to burn.
It's pretty hard, but that's what they, they did some of that back on the Middle Fork one time, they just burned it, and it worked great.
They tried burning that one down here at Banks last year.
Um, are you got road graders out yet? When is that going to start?
Yeah, I'm, we're patching, we're crack sealing, I got the blades out working, not doing full blade, just trying to cuff some of the holes in, kicking snow banks back, trying to get our roads dried up. I'm, I'm keeping the people I have on there. Like I said, I don't have a full, full crew, I'm leaving about four or five of them home because of underlying issues or.
That makes sense, I think that's only reasonable.
Yeah.
There might be a time when you might want to come in one day a week and do something.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep them busy, because we're paying them, so if there's something for them to do, I got them working.
Okay.
That's it.
Um, and you guys got it worked out with the water waste truck, all that's taken care of, I just make sure we didn't forget that.
Water waste, the one you're driving?
Well, they said the one that's hurt is driving, so I didn't.
Who you guys could talk about and figure it out, I just wanted to make sure that somebody's looking at that.
Okay.
Okay?
And I don't know where our new vehicles are yet. Kathy's only open two days a week.
Oh, really?
I texted her last week and asked where the new vehicles were, and she said she'd check. And they text me every day, where are my cars? I know, they, they keep giving, giving me their old ones, I know they're going to show me one of these days. I'll start getting them in here pretty quick. Supposedly, from what Dave told me that Kathy told him, is the two newer ones we just ordered were sitting in Detroit or somewhere back there, already made, ready to hop on a train. Things are still running as far as I know, and that was two weeks ago.
Hopefully it'll be here pretty quick.
Hopefully.
Okay.
Okay.
You say, now before we move on, I didn't get to do Carol in the elected officials, do you have a report for us? You were out of the room.
I don't have anything really significant. I had two trials set in May, we've settled those trials, so we're moving forward with that. We took two pleas today, and we actually sentenced via video conference. The Supreme Court had shut down everything through April 15th. Judge Berice anticipating that was going to get reset, has really reset most of our calendar to the 4th of May. So, we're operating under that presumption, and we're well within speedy trial, so we don't have any concerns. I was just getting some emails from some of the other prosecutors, and they're concerned about their calendars getting backed up, but I had my office pull our May calendar, and I think it's in light of how long we've pushed things off, I still think we're in good shape. My staff's been rotating in and out and keeping things moving, so it's just frustrating for us, because we set something and send subpoenas, and then the sheriff's office has to go out and deliver those, and then we cancel them and set some more. So, we're just trying to keep a, keep a good grip on what's happening with our cases. Insofar as the civil side of things, I've been working with civil counsel that we have on several items that we have that are working, and I've been working with Pat and with Cindy and with Jeff on some of the items that have come up with them as well. So, I'm here for you, I'm, I'm off quarantine, so I've been coming into the office, so if you need me, I'm here. And I know Commissioner Bingham, and you sent me something on water waste, which I intend to go back and look at today. I think we're in good shape to move forward on those types of items and, and to continue to press forward. So, I'm here if you need anything or have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, guys need a break?
After Cindy.
After Cindy, okay. So, the next item up on the agenda is an action item, Skibart and Shuttle extension.
Okay, so last year, you know, as you can see by the documents that I sent to you, a conditional use permit was issued, subject to approval annually of a new contract with the Board of County Commissioners, so that we have a chance every year to review and make sure that's still something that you want to occur in your public right of way. As far as I know, there were many issues with what they were doing last year, and so they would like to provide you with another contract to sign, identical to the one last year, and then do the proof of liability insurance.
So, you don't have that contract with you now?
The new one, no.
No, okay.
I wanted to make sure that you were going to entertain, I mean, because we didn't want to write the contract if you want changes made to it.
So, did they help take care of the bathroom that was part of the contract?
Yes.
So, they did.
Yep.
I, you know, as I say, I've talked with him, visited with him quite a few times last summer, and I thought they did a great job down there, so.
I think they learned too that they probably shuttled more vehicles than they did people. People come up there and unload, you take my car back down there, and they, they were